Chris, changing the time. Thank you, Dan. Well, we need to start on time or we're not gonna end on time, no matter how. And that clock back. What? Changing.
As they come in, we'll we'll welcome them as we always do. I just, I'm a little late here myself. I lost traffic time. And then I fix the clocks. This one was slow, that one was fast. So. We'll try to finish a little before three. Air Force Planning Board Overview. Courses that we teach at twice a year and we get large audiences every time we do it, which is an act to have so it's good to even for long time members to So, how many in the audience first term for his own board of people? So, a decent number. We had a large number this morning. I are planning board members. But most of you, there were good numbers planning board members, any members of local government boards, town boards, city, cities, county, city, counties, great. Any municipal staff? Great. A bunch appealing to. So, we're well We're going to talk about modern zoning, which was first used in New York City in 1916, but the City. This is an outline of the course. Try to use the same thing in the little picture and minimize it. It's We're going to define the zoning board's appeals, the enforcement official, the appellant. We're going to talk about interpretation and variances. We're going to go over procedures. And then we're going to wrap important and important planning board overview that that's is the planning boards too. So, the definition of zoning is the regulation of get calls from local officials who say but we have a land use law that regulate uses, you should have some kind of board They're different in different areas. There are different uses. Well, and this is a simple sample zoning on the side there. And the dimensional zones. And it's both optional and areas. Like, here we are. Like an institutional zone in the middle low density residential, high density residential, office, commercial, business in zoning has evolved some. We've been reminded, we understand now that certain commercial uses are not even valid. Appeals because well, aggrieved applicants who could be the property owner taking on the project or a neighbor who's going to have The ZBA acts as a buffer and is the first place to go. The administrative remedy to Our contemporaries own board of County Supreme Court said, New York State Supreme Court of United County said in an 1925 case, purpose of a board of appeals is to, is not to destroy zoning, but to save it. The property of citizen what might be reasonable today might not be reasonable. Enforcement officer is that person charged with enforcing the zoning. Sometimes, one of our former colleagues, before she started with us, she enforcement official is also responsible for enforcing the uniform fire prevention and zoning code, I say zoning regulations and law. Building code, the uniform fire prevention. So, totally different laws. The code, the building code is a state Yes, when the, and we're enforcement official makes a decision. Yeah. We'll go, we'll talk about that more. Pretty dense publication and it's or was. It was a long time sixties or seventies up until only credit on any of our publications. Statutory authority for zoning and the zoning board of appeal. You know, there are three sections of two sixty law, two sixty seven and the equivalent. If you're available online, if you just take that excerpts those copies of it, but it an order form, one of our former colleagues used to say, why do you bring that order form? She used to sit at the table at the conferences and she'd say, why do you bring that order form? It's always, it's always the last thing on the table. Whenever you make So, if you ever want to know it, it's kind of clunky to go through all like list on our old website. You can just scroll down the list. Now you have to turn a bunch of pages and they're not all in alphabetical order with the new long as it's within reason. And so, per form is a good thing to have. But Guide to Planning and Zoning Law is a compilation of excerpts or a compilation of statutes that pertain to
Yeah. And did you explain our guide to planning and zoning?
I did.
Oh, you did?
Just now.
Where am I? Where? I know.
Right here.
I was at lunch.
Right there. Let's set it.
I beg your pardon.
Unless I imagine it. Can I imagine?
If you attended this morning's planning board overview, this will be a refresher in some, in some degree because zoning board of appeals members are also public officers, just like planning board members, and you're held to the same standards under public officers law. And your terms of office coincide with the number of board members on your board. So if you have a three member board, you serve a three year term. If you have a five member board, you serve a five year term. And those terms are staggered so that you don't have a brand new turnover every year, and you've preserved some institutional knowledge and you have some veterans on your team. And it also helps politically so that you don't have a new supervisor or mayor appointing all fresh people. So you have some political balance hopefully left on your, on your board. So for qualifications, you have to be at least eighteen years old. You have to be a citizen of the United States and a resident of the municipality in which you serve. There are some exceptions to that, especially in rural areas and sparsely populated areas. You could have a local law superseding that state law so that if you were in a village, you could draw from the residency requirement in the town or the county, kind of expand your search a little bit. And if somebody in your municipality are doing things on your board, they can't simply say, we don't need you to show up at the next meeting. We're all right without you. So if you can be appointed, you can be disappointed, but not without a public hearing. You have to have, be formally charged with the reason for your disappointment or removal. And if you have local regulations or board procedures that identify specifically for cause, that would be better. Some examples of being removed for cause are failure to attend training or to achieve training, or maybe failure to attend a certain number of meetings in a row, or continued inappropriate behavior at a meeting. And over here in the right on this box is your public officer's oath that you need to sign within thirty days of being appointed. And if you miss that window of opportunity, you can't just go in and sign the book at any time. You need to be formally reappointed and then you can go in and sign because otherwise, if you never signed your oath of office, your seat is technically considered to be empty and someone else can be appointed to that seat at any time. So if you really value your position, you're going to want to make sure that you have signed your oath of office. And something not on this slide is alternates. Oh, question. Yes. Nope. You, no, you can still vote. You still have all the rights and responsibilities, but your seat is in jeopardy of being filled at any time. So, zoning board of appeals, it's a good idea. Alternates or at least one alternate. An alternate is there in case you have a conflict of interest by state statute. But if you wanted to have an alternate serve for any other reason, then you need to pass a local law. And that could be, we need an alternate to achieve a quorum. That would be a good time to call an alternate in so that you can keep applications moving through the process. And alternates are appointed in the same way that regular board members are appointed and by the same appointing authority. And the appointing authority determines and how many alternates they want to have join the board. So they could have one alternate or ten or any number, and the alternate could be for one purpose, maybe for one night or one application, or they could serve a set amount of time for five years. It's totally up to the locality how they want to manage that. As for planning board members, and there's no limit to how many credit hours can be rolled over and kept in a bank. And if you stay all day today, you're going to achieve more than four hours for sure. So that's good. You're already ahead for next year. And failure to comply, so if meeting this year, it doesn't invalidate any decision that you make. You can still continue to serve and devote. It just means that you are ineligible for reappointment when your term is officially up. And we make it so easy for you to get your training. We really want people to be trained. So there are venues for every cup of tea. There are training opportunities, webinars that you can take from the privacy of your home. We have online training, interactive training. We have onsite training like this, or even your local board can constitutes training. So if you wanted to have how to do a blueprint, read a blueprint, or if you wanted to discuss a planning book or publication, as long as your board says this qualifies as training, then that's good enough. And your local board, your local clerk is the one who keeps track of your training hours, not the Department of State. Your code enforcement officer, who is your building and fire code officer, they are subject to heavy training, and New York State Department of State does track their training. So that's got nothing to do with you as ZBA members. And your zoning enforcement officer by statute is not subject to any training requirements. So you might have something at the local level, but they are not subject to any training, which is another reason why if you have questions as ZBA members, you need to ask your municipal attorney, or you can contact your county planners or us at the Department of State, but you should not be asking questions of the zoning enforcement officer. Doesn't work that way. So, just wanted to straighten, straighten that out. And your training can be waived or modified by resolution if it's in the best interest of the municipality. So what do I mean by that? If you have a board that's already staffed with a professional planner, a land use attorney, an architect, an engineer, somebody who's already getting professional credits in their private life or their professional life, it may be redundant for them to sit through four hours of training when they already have to get training to keep up their license or other certification. So your municipality may waive that. They may also modify it and say, four hours isn't enough. We want you to have five hours or ten hours. So just know that that's a possibility. And as I mentioned this morning, four hours it's really not a lot when you consider there are over nine thousand hours in a year. So when you're sitting here and you might be thinking, I really want to get outside today, it's only four hours out of nine thousand. So, so thank you. Jurisdictions, they have appellate jurisdiction and original jurisdiction. All zoning boards have appellate jurisdiction. Appellate, this means that things come to the zoning upon appeals. There's a trigger. Something had to happen first. The average Joe just doesn't walk up to the ZBA and say, give me an area variance. So a trigger has to happen first. So all ZBAs, their primary responsibility is to interpret the zoning regulation and to issue or to deny variances. So their other powers is original jurisdiction. Only some ZBAs have this, and that only happens when the local governing board delegates certain powers to them. And this means that their power originates with the ZBA. For example, a special use permit. So somebody doesn't have to go to the officer first to get a special use permit. They would apply to the original ZBA. They would originally go to the ZBA and have their request for the special use permit, their application reviewed there. So that's the difference between something coming to the board on appeal and something originating, the application originating with the board itself. It's got to be a trigger. Something has to happen first. That trigger is usually the zoning enforcement officer had to act first. And this means somebody went to the zoning enforcement officer with their permit and the ZEO either said, yes, we're granting this permit, we're denying this permit, or the ZEO is issuing some kind of citation for a violation that may have been reported, or maybe they witnessed the violation firsthand, or another kind of enforcement action has to be the trigger to get the ball rolling for something to appear before the zoning board. The exception to that is known as the direct appeal. And this can be for a site plan review, a subdivision review, or a special use permit. And for example, or a cul-de-sac, you know, a developer is doing a residential development for, and they have a cul-de-sac. And the cul-de-sac usually happens because there are leftover little parcels of odd sizes and shapes that don't conform to the traditional one house, one acre cookie cutter type of zoning for the municipality. And they still want to sell those lots. So a little narrower. They don't meet the setback requirements. That means the developer, the applicant is going to have to apply for an area variance to bring that parcel into conformance. So to save time and to save a step, the applicant can go to the ZBA with a direct appeal. They can go right to the ZBA and ask for that area variance. They don't have to go to the zoning enforcement officer first for him to make a determination and then to go forward with the appeal. So it saves a lot of steps. It skips that bureaucracy and red tape. And remember that subdivision written recommendation from the planning board, no matter what happens. Of standing. Standing is another one of those part. So what, what is standing? Standing is the, the right for someone to appeal. And the closer someone is, the appellant is to being harmed, the more standing they have. So I would have more standing if I live next door to Chris and, you know, I'm suffering as a result of a zoning determination, living next to Chris. Say he put in a, a second floor to his house and now he's shining, that, that is shining down on my solar panels and I can't get any sunlight to generate energy to generate on my house. So now I have a grievance, right? Because the action of that permit allowed him to build higher, but it hurt me in the end. So I have standing, I have more standing because I live next door to Chris and I am harmed more. If I lived across the street from Chris, part. So what what is standing? Um, standing is the the right for someone to appeal. And the closer someone is the appellant is to being harmed, the more standing they have. So I would have more standing if I lived next door to Chris and you know, I am suffering as a result of a zoning determination, um living next to Chris. Say he put in a a second floor to his house and now he ' s shining, that that is shining down on my solar panels and I can ' t get any sunlight to generate energy to generate um on my house. So now I have a grievance, right, because the action of that permit allowed him to build higher, but it hurt me in the end. So I have standing, I have more standing because I live next door to Chris and I am harmed more. If I lived across the street from Chris, I would have, I possibly could have still have standing, but standing because I am further away from the action. So it ' s the ripple effect. The further out you are from the action, the less standing you have. It doesn ' t mean you don ' t have any standing. You just have less standing. So who could have had a permit or someone who was cited for a violation, or it could be a third party who was harmed by the zoning enforcement officer ' s determination. That third party could be um somebody who lives at the at the end of the street, or it could be a municipal officer, a department, a board, or a bureau. So it could be the entire planning board, or it could be the entire highway department. It ' s not one individual staff person on the board or in that department. So it ' d be the whole the whole kitten caboodle. an appeal. You have to file within sixty days of the zoning enforcement officers filing the action. That ' s when the clock starts ticking. So there is an exception to that, and that is if you are a third party. So again, if I lived from Chris and I am that third party, I would have sixty days from the date I should have known that um I should have known or could have known of the zoning enforcement officer ' s decision. So let ' s break that down a little bit. What if um what if the issued in January, but I didn ' t see any construction activity, uh because it was snowing. We had lots of snow and ice storms. And then suddenly uh the the addition that you got are ones that it just comes in overnight on a crane and boom, it ' s it ' s there. And I ' m thinking, holy cow, what just happened? The house and and now it ' s a whole other level is put on. I how could I have known? I had no way. I wasn ' t reading the newspaper in the fine print. I didn ' t see that 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 permit was issued. So the law gives like that, a little more neighbors especially, a little more flexibility. That ' s why the time clock is extended to sixty days, um in case you were sick or on vacation in Florida or something. Gives you a little more breathing room to file your appeal. And you should file your notice of appeal by letter if your municipality doesn ' t have a formal application or a formal form on file. Um, so if you don ' t have anything formally, you can just draft a letter and that will suffice. And then you need to file the copies with the zoning enforcement officer and the zoning board of appeals. And once that ' s filed, the appeal stays the enforced thing. So this is a little this is uh looks like garage here and it ' s um let ' s imagine it ' s painfully close to the property line, might even be on the property line. And I live next door and I come home and it ' s one of these modular ones that ' s already put put in. I go to work, I come home and there it is. And I think, holy cow, he line. So I call my zoning enforcement officer and the zoning enforcement officer comes out and measures and says, you ' re right, Trish, he is one inch over on your property line. And so we can um we can have a stay put on the property and a stay is stops the municipality from further proceedings against Chris until this goes before the ZBA and we figure it out or it gets dismissed or we work it out or whatever happens. It ' s not a stop work order where he ' s got to stop putting the siding and the shingles and the roof and everything else on. He can continue to work at his peril. And that ' s dangerous, but he could be so confident that his measurement is right and my measurement is wrong, that he ' s going to roll the dice and say, I ' m just going to keep going and they ' re not going to make me take it down for one inch over. This is ridiculous. So he decides to keep rolling And it turns out that everyone agrees he ' s one inch over and he was he shouldn ' t have been building. And the zoning enforcement officer says, take it down, Chris. Take it down, bring it into conformance. And that has happened. So remember that the stay is against the taking further action. It ' s not against uh it ' s not a stop work order for the applicant or the homeowner or property owner to stop their building situation, although they probably should just to be on the safe side.
Right. I just want to clarify one thing in Chris project. She didn ' t look at her neighbor. This is an instance where it ' s just a building permit. Oh, that somebody had a building permit by seeing the building permit in the window, somehow talking to somebody to know that your neighbor got a building permit. But the reason the language of the statute says sixty days from the time third party appellant should have known is because if Trish looked out her window and saw that I was pouring the footing, months after I got the permit, let ' s say my I got the permit in January and didn ' t pour not when the permit necessarily was issued, then she should have known. might have turned by and said, hey, there ' s a garage going up right on your property. Do better. Could have known. Could have known. Yeah.
a demolition permit in the fine print in in the legal notices. There was a demolition permit. And I remember thinking, how many people read the fine the legal notices. They ' re super tiny. And you know, it just just happened that I caught a demolition permit.
was probably when
It wasn ' t the enforcement official. It was it was in the legal
That ' s that ' s ministry. And that ' s why she didn ' t see the paper. That ' s okay. variance wasn ' t granted and or the fake and there was an order initially to remove definitely know that there was an in-ground pool ground pool was just like just forged ahead. And then there would station and maybe variances and kept going because she was confident, well, the pool ' s already there. They ' re forgiveness instead of permission, she didn ' t, and they forced her to fill the in- ground pool. And and or an accorded rate. So uh that was an expensive So we ' re going to talk a little bit about interpretations. I have a long stretch here to to practically apply the law. So it worry whether it ' s a restaurant in the zoning I worked with when I was municipal planner. Yeah. precisely um fit into low measuring last example with the garage, whether it ' s a bed and breakfast or a short term rental, uh those kinds of and and we have an example similar regulations and similar facts, the same regulations and similar facts. You ' re not earlier zoning board of appeals uh decided on the by your decision and your findings and you up governing board ' s intent when the zone opted or if it ' s about a definition, the ordinary it ' s written and it ' s why there ' s not one, it ' s why it ' s there ' s an enforcement official whose decisions was uh maybe the uh office in St. Albany when the Washington Avenue Brewery, a couple blocks west of our office, it s rave music concerts. And auditorium uses. And me for these rave music concerts because free go until one or two in the morning and then everybody would get out, raise a ruckus on the residential streets Um, it was a Board of Zoning Appeals agreed. Yeah. were What they did was they, the Board of Zoning Appeals used uh said the frame are fixed seating. So for that is not a permitted use. And it appellate division and the appellate division said, read on and there is uh auditorium can refer like like this with no fixed seating. ' s rule in the up the city kind of gave up its ability with insufficient conditions. treatures are allowed or an auditor city was kind of was was somehow resolved, but uh by it ' s a lesson, there ' s a double lesson here. And in and to use variances. It if it ' s, yeah, you ' re stuck with. If it ' s a use variance, you ' re stuck with. If you actually you change the zoning, you might not be stuck with it because not reading the statute carefully. Well, But we ' ll get into this in the use variances discussion. If you do that, you ' re not really find out why in just a second. Um, so the another interpret model its adult use permit Z E O booty said or division said, there ' s no statutory requirement for it. You ' re looking at different, it ' s apples and oranges. You ' re looking at 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 the
A B C?
No, like liquor. Thank you. I ' m just like, I couldn ' t couldn ' t think of a term. Yeah, liquor felt uses, there ' s no statutory uh adult uses, there is no statutory uh language on adult uses. So what the local government how the local government wants to regulate secondary uses, as the town of Ryslop did
or
very carefully written in this law. Just
but Yeah.
really lesson about use variances is where we ' re
But the definition of a use variance is is not a use variance is to use property, to use land for a purpose not permitted by zoning and reusing that property is always an option. It
car wash is a shoe repair. Like
up
Right in between two residences
but
don
' re
to grant really works for the neighborhood.
it
if it were to the bed
definition of spot zoning is that it ' s
neighbors on the street can benefit from car wash, the
up
And the other thing that happens at this car wash is that there are always potholes right in the street because people come out of the car wash in the winter and they drip on the pavement and it freezes plus there are always potholes right in front of the car wash.
and
So, but if it were, let ' s say a corner market or bakery or some
' s neighbors and not to their detriment, it
So for some reason boards are much more frightened
up
in addition to being inclined to grant a use
the
business in a space years ago.
it
all business I had was thought of as light industrial and
up
variance test is really so difficult, but I ' ve been converted working here. It ' s very serious because the only the legislative board
up
that the applicant is the land is unable to make a reasonable return in any permitted raised and any current use, any use currently allowed by a previous use carries. And
it ' s up to you and they say, well, this building does
work. Um, and this is always the factor that no one ever comes to the board. It ' s
I
They don ' t say my land can ' t make a reasonable return. First factor, and it ' s often the most finding that the property is incapable
her.
There ' s no spreadsheet that we can provide you. There ' s no, there are no hard and fast formula. It ' s up to you as the zoning board to figure.
up
which the owner of a property
valuable to build a two family residence using a significant
you that um
her
a court said, as many courts in denying or an upholding that did not concede say
up
which are not necessarily the most
it
that for
drawing a blank on on what
perimeter. If the telecommunications provider can
it
happens a significant gap in certain
whether it be in changing the zoning, issuing a special use permit.
so this is for all other uses
it
that one
and respect
created a
prevent
not the unique participant, but the owner. So the owner says, hey, I paid a fortune for that property and I
subject, um short term rental. up
bubble because I wanted to use it as short term rental. And
local government decides that short term rentals are not going to be allowed and
that owner does
up
if it ' s a self- created hardship, the um
up
the an owner who is appealing for the use varience bought the property as its current use of, so if um if there ' s no zoning, let ' s say Trish had the
s in a rural area and she
at one s and use it as short term rental and
' s
zoning was passed and it was very strictly residential, no short term rentals.
a use variance.
having had the house
up
fortune for her because she owned the house, all
whereas I
So, uh, and this another
know, the
So if I buy that property, I ' m bound by the zoning, whether I
filter or Trish told me, yes.
think if it ' s still self- created, if the ownership closed down and lost its nonconforming status and
fired by inheritance. I
question. And replicants to me as
this is gonna be great for the neighborhood.
But last factor in this
up
So even if what you describe
ownership was transferred before there was zoning and uh
Um, you pass off free
it
Yeah, to have
up
with parking in the front. It just it
what
or a former neighborhood school. If let ' s say
what
restriction, the neighborhood character factor
pool for senior housing. is
why certain conditions are attached to
right
if um the the
the
and the front, the parking in the front and that it ' s one story. That ' s why they clashed.
like
here were a rezoning here and that ' s there ' s probably a little of that. I think
up
law office with a couple
But it still evokes a single family right up
but that nonconforming use um
up
the board ' s, okay, the definition of legal variance
that um um for
So a residential street in Albany, we
That ' s a nonconforming use re
the
Okay, that
neighborhood building, if they wanted to expand, they would need a use variance to do so.
it
if there is often a provision in
if
say the bar closed three years.
the
one. Let ' s say there was a fire at the bar and the appraisal on the the business was four hundred thousand dollars and the repairs were three hundred thousand dollars.
it
is more than fifty percent destroyed, then it phases it phases them. And
say
' re changing regulations on signs. We ' re
up
not allowing huge signs anymore. Within ten years, you have to come into
fifteen years, nonconforming uses have to become
that
Yeah.
Why with zoning if it ' s if the business bar in that neighborhood, it ' s a beloved neighborhood is allowed and rezonate and it wouldn ' t be spot
of
of that previous law. Yeah, zoning, but the local governing board could say, hey, this this neighborhood bar is really an asset. Let ' s legitimize it and zone that parcel of the neighborhood bar. And Trish gets What said here was they could open up for a day. So to 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 confront. But um your question really brings up a bigger a If you ' re allowing this, if for that one use, why not just if if this is the four part test, which it might not, but
It
Well, it ' s a good thing for the neighbor, but he may get the both that the town board property, not the property owner, but with like conditions upon that use.
Mhm.
by follow these conditions. Is that one way to
Right.
area variances are are of their different animal than use variants, but yeah, you the simple
they
or a a construction trail, and it ' s temporary in nature, then it can be temporary. But if it ' s for something that ' s much like a business or a building, a type of building. which is um which is maybe one way of preventing the use variance from running the land forever.
I ' ll fix you a line.
Okay. Sorry to go on for too long. If we if we go late, it ' s my fault.
Okay. page publication called Guidelines for applicants to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and it spells out that four prong use variance test. It ' s real, I call it the quick and dirty cheat sheet. I use it all the time. It also spells the five prong test for the area variance. So if you ' re on the Z B A board, go ahead and get that four page publication. It ' s a really handy handy cheat sheet to keep you on track with that test. And the idea is that you don ' t hand out use variances because you ' re tipping away at the original intent of your comprehensive plan. So now on to an area variance. And the idea behind the area variance dimensional relief. That could come in the form of setbacks, it could come in the form of density, set into a lot that ' s covered, or maybe height, maybe they want to add more height, more stories than is ordinarily allowed. So again, it ' s a five prong test. And here is an example. We typically a drive thru, because it ' s probably not meeting the proper setback requirements. They might need they might need a few extra feet so that cart two cars can get through at the same time, or wide enough for an emergency vehicle to be able to get in there and maybe turn the corner to get to the or even a truck to get to the back end of a parking lot. So the use variance test. The idea is that balancing the benefit to the community, health, safety, general fare and aesthetics to the burden of the applicant. So you ' re weighing it back and forth and it ' s meant to be less strict than the use variance test. So in fact, it ' s so less strict that an applicant can flunk every this five prong test and still get the area variance. Hard to believe, but that ' s true. Unlike the use variance, if you flunk one prong, that ' s it, you ' re done and you can ' t continue to move forward. So the area variance is going to be looking at a change to the community character. It ' s going to be looking at the substantiality of that request, you know, just how just how big is it? What ' s the magnitude of that ask? What ' s the effect on the physical or This is an interesting one. Are there alternative and do their own site visit and figure out for themselves, gee, maybe there is an alternative where they don ' t need the the area variance at all. And finally, the fifth prong is the situation self- created. Um as we saw with the use variance, if it ' s self- created, it ' s their own fault. They don ' t get the use variance, but with the area variance test, maybe it is their own fault or maybe they came to it or they inherited this problem. Um the board can still give them some flexibility and grant them the relief that they ' re seeking. So here ' s the first prong that you have to consider. Will there be a change to the neighborhood character, and would undesirable changes be eliminated if we had conditions in that will give you some ideas on, you know, what does it like? What ' s the lighting? What are the smells? What are the sounds? These are things that don ' t translate on an application. But if you ' re out there doing a site visit, um sound a little better, noise a ten or maybe even smell a little better if you ' ve ever uh walked by a coffee roaster. Have you smelled those? Even for coffee lovers, that can be quite quite a smell. know, a fry, well, maybe if you ' re the owner, um, you know, if you ' re raking in the money, you you can get used to a lot of things. But anyways, in these pictures, here we have have a high rise building in a business, a mixed use business district, and you can see that that residential unit really did disrupt the character of the neighborhood. It doesn ' t have any first floor retail, doesn ' t really seem to have a lot of pedestrian or human scale amenities compared to what was there previously existing. In the middle picture, we have uh looks like a used car parking lot or some kind of parking lot, and there are some things that the board could have posed to make this a better fit. As you can see, the sidewalk itself is interrupted by a light pole. So what does that tell you about their uh walkability and their goals for walkability or aging in place? It ' s not good for anyone in a wheelchair or a baby carriage. But they could have done some landscaping, a buffer or a fence between the part the cars parking and the sidewalk to give an increased sense of security for pedestrians. In this last picture, we see a low level mobile gas station that is lit with a goosnet light. So that was a good condition that maybe the board imposed because it blends into the residential structure behind it. It doesn ' t have bright neon lights flashing and it ' s low so that it doesn ' t disrupt uh the flow of traffic and it ' s more neighborhood scale. traditional, uh very large, um signage, especially a gas station or a fueling station signage. The second one is, are there any all don ' t hire a use variance. So if you were doing your site visit and you went out, you saw, oh, well, maybe if they put that addition on the left side of the house instead of the right side of the house, they wouldn ' t need um a variance at all. And but maybe the applicant is going to come back and say, well, that would be nice. We thought of that too, but we can ' t do that because um because of our internal internal patterns. And this is where all of our um heating and lighting infrastructure is or whatever reason. Or it might just be, you know, the the lighting, the um the southern exposure is better on one side or it ' s cheaper for them to construct or the aesthetics are just generally better. So it ' s up to you to come up with alternatives or to at least think about some possible alternatives. And it ' s not just about looking at the really put on your thinking caps and you might come up with a better uh head in the first place. substantiality of the request. And this really comes down to the magnitude and what is the amount of the variance that is requested. Is it five feet or is it fifty feet? But is it five feet of a ten foot setback? That setback. That is less intrusive on the community. And what is the magnitude of that variance requested? So again, you have to really ask, you have to take the big picture and see the overall um proportions of what the person is asking for. And you don ' t have to give them everything that they ' re asking for, that ' s for sure. Uh, the fourth prong is the physical impact. So, you know, when we think of environment, the environment isn ' t just the sun, the air and the flora and the fauna. The environmental impacts also go to the economic health of the neighborhood where this application is as well. So what kind of impacts potentially act view. Um in the days of solar panels, it could block sunshine. Like it could be drainage problems. Um earlier we talked about removing trees or creating berms or drain changing drainage patterns. You could be helping the applicant, but you could be creating a problem the owner. So you always need to be aware of that. You could be impacting wetlands, especially when people are looking for pavement or more impermeable surfaces. You ' re definitely increasing stormwater runoff. So you think you might be helping one parcel, but you could be creating drainage parcels in general, especially when you are in floodplains or wetlands. And you could be creating a parking I was just at the walk bike conference in Rochester and we were talking about bicycles and parking shortages. And are most of you aware twenty feet from a corner? Nobody knows that. space, aren ' t we? And so where where I live, it ' s a houses up? And they said, well, we ' ll raise the houses up, the garage is underneath and people will pull under there and that ' ll save us on our street parking. And I said, no, it ' s going to be doing exactly the opposite because now you ' ve created a curb cut on the street and you have to be five to fifteen feet on either side of the driveway so that somebody can back out. And then you couple that with of raising a house up and parking underneath of on street parking. So it ' s it ' s hard to believe that these things happen, but you need to be aware of them, that you could be potentially creating more parking shortages when you ' re trying to do exactly the opposite. created. Um even though you came to the problem or you created the problem, you still can get some relief from the Z B A. Um if so, the owner necessarily isn ' t per variants. And here we have this example of a shed in the back of the driveway. Maybe they needed relief because the lot to begin with was a substandard lot and they already um they already put the shed on there or they were replacing an existing shed. So it wasn ' t necessarily self- created. So maybe they got some flexibility and they were granted the area variance. conditions. Again, if you ' re doing those site visits or you have inside knowledge of the the parcel or the application, you can get really creative with imposing conditions. And, you know, you ' re not trying to be punitive. You ' re trying to be creative so that you can have a better project for that area and that neighborhood in the long run. So, uh, you have to clearly specify the conditions to be imposed and draw a connection. There ' s got to be a nexus between what you ' re asking to ameliorate and what you really want. In this example, um somebody is trying to block something, block a view and create an enclosure using a solid surface fence so that you can ' t see over it and it. And you need to have that clearly specified, the reason why you ' re imposing that type of shed, that type of of fence so that when it eventually or it needs to be repaired or replaced, you ' re going to have something like that installed so that you ' re again having an enclosure that you can ' t see through or over. Um, yeah. ' and that ' s what they ' re going to go back and look at. And if you just say have on there, um, we want you to have a fence, they could fence. It could just be, you know, a little picket fence or it could be a chain link fence that ' s unattractive, um, and it ' s not really serving all of the purposes that you wanted it to twenty years ago. So the clearer you can be with your to be enforceable forever, because these variances run forever. They don ' t run with the applicant. So And this slide should have been up a little sooner, but you want to grant the minimum necessary. So just because somebody is asking for 20 feet, if you go out and they really only need six feet. They don ' t need 20. You can grant them, you should be granting them the minimum amount necessary. And now we ' ll be getting into the board procedures.
Okay, the board rules of procedure are earlier than your zoning law and benefit to them if puts out the agenda and puts out the agenda, cross So that might vary from Robert ' s Rules of War. A lot of boards like to try to use Robert ' s Rules of War, don ' t have kind of deep or how your meetings should occur, but love an important role in serving the board. was a attorney at this stage years ago. I would send those procedures out up step down from the board and somewhere for how to do something that ' s fairly uh So enough said about that. We have samples we can call upon and uh is much more frequently uh all agency that might have a a varying Zoning Board Appeals is rarely Zoning Board Appeals are Type II. That ' s all. board webinars and online interaction. on spirit of open meetings law in addition to uh adhering letter of the law, adhering to the spirit, the requirements are to post online and physically uh in conspicuous places. Uh notice send your schedule of meetings to media, the but just so that the media can be there so they okay. I was reading my notes and she said, Chris, I could turn her up. And I was ill uh the ability if you uh But in materials, agenda and application materials available says for the public is executive sessions, um very rare for zoning boards of appeals, your meetings law, what um what what purposes you can have the executive session, although if you ' re meeting with your attorney work session or site visit, if you ' re just talking about the there should be, it should be noticed under open meetings law. You can allow those workshop meetings, but do tell them you ' re not able to for the same reason. I just wanted to confirm, uh discussion on via email between board members. ' s it ' s okay. It doesn ' t violate open meetings law. In the spirit of open meetings law, you should say, for the record, when you gather, we talked about this by email But if you ' re replying all, if the whole board is is talking by email or social media, that Great question. Thanks for asking. And uh Oh, this is the record. We have a we have a slide for um a record less than, no, I think this is just Yeah, record should be available. Uh record, the the applica It here discussing discussing available prior to the worries about it in um though a lot of people don ' t know about one of the reasons I feel a open meetings law and a lot of there to be some ability to continue virtual participation in open meetings and meetings. Uh so to act a local law. It doesn ' t require current current allowance in place to hold meetings virtually will expire if it ' s not extended. a virtual information session next Thursday. You can go to that website, find out more. And we have a question
The public meeting requirements. So you still have to fulfill all the underlying public meeting requirements. In addition, you have to provide legal notice in your official newspaper. Official newspaper how to be a paid subscription of general circulation and these are paid notices. So somebody, as opposed to the meeting meeting notices where it ' s up to the newspaper, the media to post it if they want to. And you have to do that five days before your hearing days date at least and mail notice to the parties to the appeal. Um if you have a regional state park or state park commission, if they ' re within five hundred feet of a state park or parkway, or certain other agencies. And you want to include time and place and a brief description of the nature of the proposed action and sometimes the location of the property, if there is one to identify, if it applies. So municipalities can um also adopt additional local noticing requirements such as signs on the property, mailings to the neighbors, um as I mentioned in the prior class, don ' t necessarily rely getting the residence. You ' ll be getting the property owner. So be aware of that. And you could also use a municipal west web listserv or um a mailing list on on the internet. And your hearing notice, um sometimes the decision on an interpretation will dictate if you need a variance or not. And if the interpretation isn ' t what you wanted, you want to have language in there that a variance is also requested so that it ' s killing two birds with one stone and the applicant the applicant won ' t have to come back the next month to ask for um a variance. They can get the interpretation, um yes or no, and the variance in the same night. And notice to the adjacent municipality two thirty nine N N, um you use this for use variances, special use permit of the adjacent municipal border. You don ' t have to do anything but send it for a response or do anything else, but it ' s best practice to mark it in your minutes if you ' re using a checklist, mark that off so that people know you just didn ' t forget it, that you that you did it, and do so within ten days prior to um a hearing. And use this to your advantage. Make sure that you are taking a look at these two thirty nine ends that come into your mailbox so that you know what ' s happening in adjacent municipalities because there ' s a good chance that those projects will affect your housing, your traffic, your resources. So it ' s just good to be aware of those. County referral, this is two M M for mandatory review. That ' s how I remember that. It applies to certain applications that are within five hundred feet of municipal boundaries, state or county parks, highway streams, institutions, or land on which a state or county building is located. These even include garages and salt sheds or farm operations in state ag districts. The best thing five hundred foot border shaded in so that as a quick glance, you can take a look and see if two thirty nine M applies to you or not. And avail yourselves of the county planners ' resources because they are an excellent source. Many of their um efforts are free or low cost. And if you don ' t have professional planners, I mean, the county planners are professional planners, so look to them as a great resource because your actions could have a larger regional impact that you might not be aware of, that the county planner might be aware of.
bonded with its referral recommendation unless three days have the whole appeals to even if two day and the county planning it ' s it ' s report its referral to the local ward at least that referral is binding. So I ' m going to give the example, if the from the county of the local ward has to follow the county it probably a pretty common one. You pick Yeah. you and that ' s that is where we tend to Of course. So there there is also for those uses, for the almost almost always or all the way But I always most valuable in that in as the it So if the recommendation is approval with modifications or disapproval, the if it wants to not adhere to those law must vote in uh with a super majority, majority plus one. So if majority may need a fourth the they uh acted resolution or motion only passes with a majority. big case right before I start this number of years ago, that it of the uh a bare quorum. And two vote in favor of If the motion fails, where the is a on. And it ' s a it ' s that ' s what we call a default denial. And within sixty it bill and there ' s the it if the if it ' s if it ' s three members there and two voted in favor of it, No action.
No action.
No action. Planning Board attacks a case too. If there ' s not a vote, it ' s a fully constituted war. not variance requires for appeals, it ' s a default denial, although the board can vote in you ' re saying in zoning board of appeal if a the zoning board appeals can can vote if previously rehearsed. So one time the if on a very on a matter not previously has to vote to for an area variance, or you want to change your mind about an interpretation. But But it self, you have to in, um, there has to be unanimous vote, vote of everybody that But I had a question years ago and granted a use variance for a, a bar. closed, you remain closed and There's no statute of limitations. You just have to Let's see my questions sort of then be prepared. that, un- unless the app can or the, the tab can, I just wrote based upon a previous, um, oh, it's the tech applicant acted in good faith, uh, s, uh, this detail, if the
Okay, we, we need to
Sorry. Yeah, we're out of time.
We're out of time. So we're going to have to whip through the last ones. So this is about making, um, a good record that can hold up to a legal challenge. And it also demonstrates to the community that you're a good board and you're following all of your protocols. So your decision has to be made within 62 days after your hearing officially closes. And your minutes have to contain a record of who voted and how they voted. There's no voting. And you should include the language, the exact language of the, uh, motion and any conditions that were passed and send a copy with the findings to the applicant and to the county if you had to do 239, uh, referral. And your findings should be able to support the challenge to support your decision if you were ever challenged later on. So they need to have a little bit of meat with them, not just conclusory statements that we denied the application or we, we said yes to the permit. Um, so the findings applies the law to the application conclusion. It describes why you denied or why you approved those reasons. And it also should describe why you impose those conditions. And your findings should be approved by the board and not just simply drafted by your attorney and then filed. And filing, if you're using that checklist or your timeline, clock starts ticking the second that these records are placed under the municipal clerk's control. That could mean putting them in their record inbox. It could mean when they have formally stamped, uh, received. Um, it's different for each municipality, but you need to know what that is, especially if you're in a municipality that doesn't have, um, five days a week, um, municipal offices open. What?
Staff
Staff coverage. Thank you. And file those decisions. I have business days, notice, not calendar days, business days. Um, but we recommend you do it the next day as soon as possible. Um, or Sister Mary Dennis said, immediately if not sooner. And then that starts the 30 days of appeal for someone wanting to fi- uh, asserturari known as an article 70A. So it's really important that you close that door because you don't want somebody coming uh, being able to file a certiorari against the municipality. You want to shut that opportunity down as soon as possible. And here's our information. If you want to contact us, um, after the show or business hours.